David Shirley.
I got this lawyer to charge you.
Well, whatever they want, they can have whatever they want.
I can see that too.
Biggest, biggest problem, first problem, problem out of.
I think it's eight hundred and ten percent, ten percent of the private streets. They do their day, they take me in. It's really good.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is our March first, two thousand and twelve, Word of the Senate for the City Council of Canton. And if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invitation.
One nation, one mayor, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I bow my head, please, and please forgive me, I'm a little hoarse from, just a little hoarse. Good evening, Lord. It's good to be here with all the wonderful people and citizens of Canton, the council, the mayor, and other Canton employees. We hope to have a very worthy meeting tonight to make a lot of progress towards some of our mutual goals. Hope that you'll give us some guidance, some understanding, so we can get through some of the issues that face our city. Please be with our troops as they're always in danger, take care of their families, and we ask this in your son's name, Jesus Christ, amen. I can welcome all our guests and visitors tonight, and first of all, let me, by way of introduction, let you know who we are. I'm Gene Hoggood, the mayor. To my left is Councilmember Mr. Beresford, Councilmember Bryan, Councilmember Huffman. This is our city attorney, Bobby Dyer, with Dyer and Russbridge, city manager Scott Wood, Mr. Bob Rush, councilman, and Susan Stanton is our city clerk. Councilmember Jack Goodwin is running late, but will be here in a little bit, I think, so. We do welcome you here, and we have, to begin tonight, we do have a proclamation that we would like, would like to read and then present to, in honor of the Girl Scouts one hundredth anniversary. Who is here from the Girl Scouts? What do we have? If you would, come on up, all right? Let me just come out there, I better read it here so everyone can hear. This is an organization, obviously, that has endured for a long, long time, and has been extremely good for all our young ladies, and we appreciate the adults, I gotta say that, that are involved in this organization, but without them, the girls would not have it to be a part of. Let me read this in honor of Girl Scout Week. Whereas March twelfth, two thousand and twelve, marks the hundredth anniversary of Girl scouting in America, begun by Juliette Gordon Lowe in nineteen twelve in Savannah, Georgia, and whereas Girl scouting in Georgia began in nineteen twelve, making this the one hundredth year of Girl scouting in the state as well as in our nation, and whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, competence, and character, and whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls developed the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime, and whereas Girl scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them in math, science, sports, technology, and other fields that can expand their horizons, and whereas more than three million current Girl Scout members nationwide are celebrating one hundred years of tradition and leadership with nearly fifty million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this movement. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of Canton, Georgia, that the week of March twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, be recognized as Girl Scout Week, and that March twelfth, two thousand and twelve, be recognized as Girl Scout Day, proclaimed this first day of March, two thousand and twelve. Okay, let me present this to you. We've got something else for you two, where can we get to do this? Please, let me get right here. Okay, y'all gonna hold it. Got it? Okay, okay, we've got one other thing here for each of you there. A little pen for you, now, I don't know that you can wear this on your uniforms, but you can have it for any other jacket or cap, anything that you have. Y'all all need to sell the mayor some Girl Scout cookies before you leave. Okay, I'm going to pay out a motion to consider, consideration to approve our agenda. Motion in a second, any other discussion? If not, those who favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for motion. At this time, we will open our public hearing regarding the proposal for the acquisition of the building, and proposal has been presented by municipal forum organization regarding a building in the industrial park that the DEFAX would, under this proposal, be leasing from the city if the proposal is approved. Let me, let me encourage you that this is a, this is not a discussion from the council to the presenters, those who wish to make comments, it is a monologue. It's we are here to listen to you, and if you have any comments, we would love to hear those, certainly, either for or against the proposal. At our, since this is a, since it is property acquisition or real estate acquisition, it is subject to being discussed by this council in executive session, which we will discuss at the end of all the agenda here, the very final item, we will discuss in executive session. So at this time, I will open the public hearing, and I would ask for those who would like to speak in favor of this to just raise your hand, and I will mention, come up one at a time, and, okay, we'll have this gentleman now. You didn't, on this one, you did not have to sign the, where's the sheet? Okay, of course I just signed in sheet, you know. The sign-in sheet basically is far, ten-minute public input period, but, so anyone that wishes, we will let anyone speak either for or against this issue during the public hearing phase, okay.
Mayor, councilman, I'm Peter Floyd, I'm a partner at Alstair Bird, and I represent for municipal development services. The principals are here. Wanted to just give you a brief update about the transaction, since we talked about it about a month ago when we presented it to you originally. I painted out a brief summary of the transaction since it's been a month since we talked about it. Also wanted to just make a few brief points, a couple of questions that come up from various parties over the last month, and we just wanted to get the answers to those out to the whole council, and the questions, one of the primary questions has resolved around whether the city would be obligated or have any financial obligation with respect to operating and maintenance expenses respecting the property, and the answer is yes, but the transaction is built such that the rents from the state are such that they will cover all operating and maintenance expenses. As those rents are budgeted now and will be included in the sublease, if we close the transaction, there's a substantial contingency building for those amounts. And there's also a mechanism built into the sublease that would provide for the increase of the operating rent and the maintenance rent if that becomes necessary. So we don't think there is an occasion when the state will not be paying that either directly as part of their rent, or if something is not included in their rent for some reason, it would not be made up in the next sixteen years rent. Another question that has come up is whether there was an independent appraisal done on the transaction. There has been one. The bank has done that, and obviously, they, they want to make sure they have an accurate view of the value of the property, both as the seller of the property and a potential lender under the transaction. But I think more importantly for the city is that the way that appraisal turned out made it possible for the bank to commit to the city that it would give five point five, approximately five point five acres, free and clear with no obligations or restrictions to the city if we close this lease financing transaction. And finally, some questions have come up about whether if the state does not renew at any point during the lease and the city decides to exercise its right to not renew this part of the transaction, whether that would have a negative effect on the credit rating of the city. And the answer is flatly, it should not. This obligation of the city is not a debt under Georgia law. These obligations have both built into contracts and in statute, we're operating under the right of the city to not renew every year. And we brought Bill Johnston with us, who's managing partner of Raymond James here in Georgia. He's an experienced investment banker, has over twenty years of experience with municipal debt underwriting and financial advice to cities, and I'd like to introduce him now and allow him to speak briefly about.
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, all, good time. Bill Johnston, I'm a manager of Raymond James, an investment banker here in Georgia, and have been practicing for years as an investment banker, and so I've represented for development services and financial advice on a number of transactions. One of the things that has come up, and I wanted to address, was any potential impact of, should there be an appropriation by the state and the city does not want the building, would there be an impact on the city's credit rating? Answer is no. The way this particular transaction is structured, there is no liability that the city would have, and therefore, there'd be no impact on the city's credit rate. In some circumstances where there's an intergovernmental contract backing a transaction, like the county has done in a number of instances, and the city has done on other projects, there would be an impact, but in this particular circumstance, there is not. I reviewed your credit ratings, and the current ratings are all very positive. Looking at your financial statements, they're also very positive, even in tough times. And again, the way this particular transaction is structured, it would have no, should there be an appropriation by the state, there'd be no impact on your credit rate.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. You know, I've been coming to city council meetings for over two years, and somehow, in that two-year period, in the last month or so, the purpose and reason for this building and the acquisition of it, the way we're doing it, is Steve's pay. I'm not sure what's in it for the city of Canton. What I'm listening to from these experts is that there's no downside to us, but what's the upside? Why are we doing this? I, it seems like we're getting in the car driving down the road, nobody knows where we're going or why we're doing it. So if I could have an explanation for that, it would be extremely helpful. It just seems to go, we're going down there. Why? You know, a number of years ago, somebody probably stood up here and made great arguments about a theater, a golf course, YMCA, a reservoir, and these cute financial packages that were put together that created no risk on the part of the city of Canton, maybe wouldn't affect the credit rating or whatever, but would we do that today if we know today what we, would we do then when we know today? I don't think so. I think the guy would get run out of the park pretty quick. So I think if, if somebody can stand up here and give me a logical reason, step by step, why we're doing this as a city, I don't care what kind of great arguments there is about affecting the bond rating, if there is an effect or a potential effect in any way, there should be an overwhelming positive someplace that overrides that. What is it? Just tell me what it is. I'm simply just asking for, why are we doing this? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. Anyone else?
City Council, thank you. I would like to address that question, and that is a good question. A couple things. Number one, one of the reasons that the city should be doing this is, number one, is for the constituents of the city, is what have benefited your, benefited the town here as well as the county. Every, every county in the state has a DEFAX facility. Constitutionally, the state is mandated to provide those. Twenty years ago, we did our first project in nineteen eighty-eight, at that time when DEFAX offices were located in old grocery stores. My mother was a DEFAX employee, that's how I got involved in this business, she worked at that Siggan building. in that Siggon building. Five people had got cancer from working in it, so that was my mission, to start trying to help them. The, at those, early on, prior to eighty-eight, when we set this model up to start doing these public-private partnerships, private landlords typically owned these buildings. And by us creating the formation, creating the structure that we've done, whereby we're able to get tax exempt money, we're able to build a new facility, in many instances, at or below what the state is paying the private sector for a private landlord. As a taxpayer, you should want to do this. When these buildings are paid off, the state continues to occupy them at a reduced rental rate. Now, this is not going to be a cash cow for the city of Canton. What the city of Canton will get paid after it's over with is the operational costs on the building and then some administrative dollars from the state, and that is no negotiated out at the end of the financing term. But as a taxpayer, you should want these projects like this because it's greatly reducing the amount of money that is having to be spent annually to provide facilities for DFAX that is constitutionally mandated.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay.
I'm Deanna Lider. I'm the director for Cherokee County DFAX. I wanted to highlight the location for the building and why the proximity to other agencies that serve like families is so fluid for the Kimberly White Building. Our families often have shared needs with child support, with mental health, and our need of therapy, and we use the Anticorps Center almost on a daily basis. And those three agencies are all within walking distance of the Kimberly White Building. And of course, we are neighbors to the Anticorps Center as we speak. So the logistical benefits are advantageous for our customers in ease of location for getting to mental health, to getting to Highland Rivers, and to deal with child support issues that come up. And of course, we're working with our tenant clients to go to work. And Driver Services is up the road also, within walking distance. We want our customers to have driver's license and go to work. So having Driver Services on the same road as these sister agencies is highly beneficial. I was just informed that Must is moving in. They sent me a delightful email, they're excited to be our neighbor, they're moving into one eleven Brown Industrial, they'll be at the top of the hill. And again, our families rely on Must for food needs and clothing needs. So having all of these sister agencies on the same road, to me, is a clear vision that the community needs to embrace, and it sets a path for families being able to access services easily and without a lot of travel and transportation. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware that those sister agencies are all aligned in the business park, and would really greatly benefit the families we serve.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If not, then we will close this, close the public hearing. And as I indicated to you earlier, we will, the council will be discussing the matter in executive session, since it does deal with real estate acquisition. Okay, next item on the agenda is our ten-minute public input period. And those who have signed up, we have the first person is Mr. Larry Woolard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Larry Woolard at two oh six oh Harmony Drive in Canton. I'm the managing member for Canton Highway one forty LLC. It's a investment that was formed for ten point four four acres that we own at the northeast corner of Georgia Highway one forty and Reinhardt College Parkway. We have been diligently trying to pursue financing for an assisted living memory care facility at that location now for a good two years, and we're getting some real prospects now, shows me the economy's certainly, looks like it's turning around for the better. One of them includes a not-for-profit by the name of Best Foot Forward. They've been working through the USDA office. Believe it or not, Canton does qualify at this point in time due to the demographics being based upon the two thousand census rather than the two thousand and ten. So we've got a timeframe right now, the next several months to get in before the window closes. But one of the things USDA requests is that is support from the city in the form of a form letter, which comes directly out of their packet. Without further ado, I'd like to pass out each one of the council members.
Sure.
And you, the mayor. Form letters at the top. In order to make it easier to write, I put in the names of the communities that go into line spaces in the form letter, USDA handles. As you can see, it's a standard form letter, copied directly out of an manual, and I've taken the liberty to go ahead and try to fill in the blanks, make it easier. You can adjust them however you'd like to, but need to get support from the council, if possible, to go ahead and give the authority to the mayor to go ahead and sign the letter to get it over to USDA for their use.
Okay. We will, we will just actually put this on our agenda, I guess, for, maybe. Mayor, I'm just, excuse us, this says the city needs grant dollars in order to purchase these police cars, or?
No, it's, no, it's a form letter just talking about, like I say, I adjusted. If you look at the letter, I went back and eliminated that kind of discussion. It's a community, it's a community development. That's the form letter, but I went back and adjusted so it made it easier for the mayor to be able to put it on the letterhead and sign. So I went ahead and changed all that and made it very specific for the project with the proper name filled in. And it can still be adjusted however you'd like to, but the main thing is you'd have to say the city is really not interested in borrowing bond money to go do this type of project. But the needs here in the community, there's a waiting list in place right now for memory care. If you try to get a memory care in the current facilities in town, you'd be on a waiting list, and it's pretty full everywhere. So there's a need. But of course, the city's not interested in going under this program, but the not-for-profit would, so.
Okay. Thank you. We will look at our city attorney to give us some final advice.
Feel free to call me, I'll be glad to answer that question very good.
Thank you. The next, let's see, Jim Wynden.
Good evening, Mayor. The new members of the council, some of you who haven't seen here before, it's the first time I've come to address this particular issue. And from some of the undercurrents in the room, I suspect that there's some other folks here with the same type of interest that I have. Here to talk about the continued deterioration of Wooded Mountain Trail in the Great Sky subdivision. It's come to the point really where the road is almost unabailable. And I know that we've addressed this subject, Mayor, you've received some correspondence that I have been working towards a resolution with Fair Green unsuccessfully, I might add. And it's my understanding that there may be some consideration in the very near future about at least maintaining the roads, rather than letting them deteriorate any further. And, you know, having come here a year ago, just about today, and one other time as well, I'm hoping that my concerns for the street that I live on, relatively unpopulated compared to some of the other folks that are suffering the same condition. But I'm hoping that all due consideration will be given to at least coming down and helping us out a bit. And I encourage any of you who haven't looked at Wooded Mountain Trail to take your four-by-fours down there in case you get stuck, and just take a look at the collapsing driveways in Great Sky, the deterioration of the road. But if something doesn't happen soon, it's not going to be salvageable. Okay? I have one other subject I'd like to mention while we're talking about that. I mentioned this to Councilman Huffman. All the water bills on our street were charged for storm drains that don't exist. So I'm not sure if that's going to be a one-size-fits-all for everybody that's in the city. You have to pay storm drains whether you have them or not, but it felt like it was something I probably needed to point out. I mean, we do pay some rather lofty property taxes at the Great Sky along with our community fees and whatnot, and I just really think that, you know, having been here pleading my case more than once, that due consideration for Wooded Mountain Trail would certainly be appropriate. So I'm sorry, but I've been out of town for five days, and my wife told me if I don't get back by seven o'clock, she's going to skin me, so. No disrespect. Thanks for listening, and good luck to the rest of you folks on the same subject.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Here all day.
Thank you for hearing, Mayor Council. I've been here before on the same issue. A lot of the things that have to do with our streets being public or private has been mixed bag. The streets were approved in different communities. Some communities had city streets totally up to the expectation to be taken into the city. Other streets in the same developments have not been required to come at that same level. That discretionary judgment has put a lot of communities in a bad way. The community that I live in, the village of Riverstone, is a small community of adults. I'm probably one of the younger ones in that group. And we brought in the community, understanding that we had obligations for the community per se, but we did not realize, some of us, not all of us, some of us, the great majority of the people moved in there, did not realize that their streets were private streets and had not been built completely to the code that was required by the state of Georgia in Canton because they were given leeway with the previous administration not to do so. Consequently, many other developments that are fairly new in this area, who aren't necessarily looking to have immediate repairs done, but want to be considered as part of the streets that are considered for being brought in as a public acquisitions to have some kind of equity in the treatment of the personnel and the residents that live there would be greatly appreciated. These people have worked hard all their lives for the communities that they've lived in, a lot of them from here, some of them not from here. That's not a distinguishing point. All of us contribute. I didn't, I was not born and raised in Canton, but I have actually worked in Canton, and in Canton schools, and in Canton around the city and things, and with the wide different charitable organizations to support the city. And we would like to be seriously considered as a community that has a specific need, and this isn't about people in all large developments. We are a small development, we have modest homes, and we are an active group in participating in the city.
Thank you very much. Mayor, did you, did you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't, I did not see this on the agenda tonight, and I'm not sure about that. It may not be something that you're addressing, or you've addressed it in a manner that's already going to be dealt with, and that is senior exemption that keeps coming up, because it keeps coming out in the local newspapers that it's not a dead issue with Mr. Bryan, and that he will continue to pursue it because he doesn't have anything to lose, because he's not running for election yet. I'm not sure just how that will be addressed, but we have serious concern about that one also.
Thank you. Mr. Floyd, did you, you had signed this too? I don't know if you had something else that, have you, have you just thought you had to sign in for the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. John Russ, did you have something else on this?
Please, I'll hear myself talking. Mayor and City Council, thank you again. I got a little second shot at this one, because I wanted to listen to what they had to say and then maybe respond if you will. You know, I listened to the DFAX representatives say that we were constitutionally mandated to have this facility, and if it's something that we absolutely have to do. And the other DFAX representative said the location was very appropriate to other similar facilities that are needed by the people that also use DFAX. Maybe this is the right building to look at. But I guess I'm asking you, the City Council, to make sure that this really is the right building in terms of the implications for the city of Canton, to make sure there's a legal document drafted that protects the city against any implications to a negative impact on our credit rating, and to make sure that that document also makes sure that this cash cow, which is never going to be, does not become something that burns our cash because we don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five on our six is a consent agenda that, does anyone see anything there? We have the approval of the February sixteenth minutes and the acknowledgement of January financials, which we will.
The only comment I have is I wasn't at the February sixteenth meeting.
Okay, well, we're, okay, we're not going to vote, we won't be voting tonight, it'll be voted on on the fifteenth, but okay. So at that point, we'll try to remember that you will not be voting on that in the minutes. Does anyone have any questions about the financials, or do you see anything about the minutes that need to be changed between now and next two weeks? Under Old Business, we have discussion and consideration of a Jima agreement. Mr. Wood, you want to, you want to discuss that, the Jima agreement? I think it's pretty standard.
I'm sorry, in a very limited fashion, Mayor, I think the essence of it, not to be confused with our local automatic aid agreement, but it's my understanding from the fire chief in particular, that this is an agreement that is required in order for us in the event of catastrophes which are approved by FEMA and/or JIMA to qualify us for FEMA and/or JIMA reimbursement, that this form is necessary to qualify us for those reimbursements.
Anyone have any questions? There is an attachment in your agenda package. Item B is the second reading of the ordinance to adopt two thousand and twelve edition of the Code of Ordinances of Canton. That is also, an ordinance is attached. We will take action on that as the second reading and adoption at our March fifteenth Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? Under New Business, we have the discussion of amending the alcohol ordinance with regard to alcohol consumption at public events. We talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, and I just wanted to discuss it at this point. Do we have, have we had any amendment at this point on that alcohol ordinance?
No, but I can discuss what would happen.
Okay. Go ahead if you will, and then hopefully we will have the amendment that may come before the council at the beginning of March.
What we will have to do is create a category of special event, permanent, and we can require that that entity, putting on the event, would still have to get a licensed provider, which is the way it is now, like the Arts Festival gives, somebody that already has a porting license and they come do that, because of the state containers permanent and to allow for these things. So we'll just allow a special event to delineate the boundaries of the event, and then allow open containers within that boundary. And that would affect the change.
And that would also allow, as I understand it, the, in other words, if someone, someone could actually, if a restaurant were located within that designated area, then someone could actually take a glass of wine or a beer, as long as it wasn't in glass container or something, actually out into that event. That would be my understanding of it as well.
But we don't actually have a prohibition against open containers in our alcohol We don't actually have a prohibition against open containers in our alcohol ordinance, but we have a prohibition against carrying it out, so it would have to allow that.
Only within that designated area.
How would that, I'm sorry, how would that apply to First Friday?
That would, if the organizers of First Friday would designate these streets that are to be within that event area, any restaurants within that that serve it and...
Do you apply for the license or the permit?
I don't, I don't, well, the organizer would have a permit, but I don't know that the restaurants would have a...
No, they would, like, Main Street program would apply to the city for an event permit to delineate the boundaries. If Main Street program wanted to provide alcohol or sell alcohol, they'd have to make those arrangements, but the restaurants within that would still be able to sell it in a plastic cup. We would just then allow, you could leave the restaurants, which you cannot do now.
This area would have to be designated not only on paper, but also at the intersections with a sign saying no alcoholic beverages beyond this point within the streets or wherever the designated area would be. So we'd need to make sure that it was very clearly marked that it would be done outside that event area.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There will be a fee to do this type of program?
That's something we did talk, we have talked about, but, you know. I would assume there probably would be a fee for a special event, I guess, if it's...
I think it's something that we should discuss.
Unless it was a city-sponsored event, I guess. Yes, sir.
I wasn't at the last meeting, I don't want to repeat any discussion we had. What's the benefit to the city for doing this? I mean, why, what is the benefit to have someone walk around with a glass of wine or...
I think the benefit is you'll get more people downtown. I think, I think that is a benefit, is that you'll have more people coming downtown and hopefully the merchants, the city will benefit from that.
And the police department would have to do a little extra monitoring, but...
Right, I agree.
They have no real objection, so the cost of it would increase a little bit. But if we get more people down and more people in the event, it might be worth it.
I'm wondering, Mr. Perry, if you have a question, whether or not those visitors would be required to pay some sort of special permit or...
I don't think...
The organization or event planner is going to be responsible for setting that up, knowing the area that's going to involve, how big, et cetera. And then based upon that information, then we'll say, have to say this is going to be the city. Now, what they do, turn around for the others. I think you're going to have to have some review built in by the police department and others. So you probably wouldn't want to charge some kind of fee to cover the cost of that review because depending on, the police department probably will want to have some input in where the boundaries are to making sure they can know where they are and...
Well, actually, the police, you know, they're notified now of all the special events anyway, but then we may need to, may need to go a little bit further than that, but they are notified anyway.
Do we know if other municipalities that allow carrying alcoholic beverages around the street have a special fee for it or require a permit?
I reviewed several cities, particularly Atlanta, which I figured would have something. Almost all of them have this as a special event. Some of it's restricted to parks, like Atlanta and Pima Park and so forth. But yes, I mean, there's a fee for applying for the permit. Do we not charge a fee already for a special event permit?
We did, yes. I don't know how, know exactly what it is, but we did, yes.
I just wanted to point that based upon the police department, in some of these events, like River Fest, that type, the Explorer does quite a bit of service for us. So they will not be able to do this beverage that they normally do, I don't think, because of the alcohol beverage. So we'd have to say we're going to rely on, we're going to have the police department. So that's, again, something we have to look at, make sure.
Well, what would, what would they be doing now that they couldn't do then?
What are they doing now?
That they couldn't do then?
Well...
Are you just saying it's going to take the police to come out and beef up their enforcement?
Yes.
The rest of the possibilities, yeah.
I think you'll, I think you'll see it won't be nearly as bad as Mr. imagine.
I'll bet that's the best way.
I hope so, absolutely. Anyone else?
We will plan to have the first reading of that. I'll go ahead and prepare it, put your attention on the first reading until the 15th.
15, that'll be fine, yeah, right. And as soon as, as soon as you get it, if you would, just circulate it with the council. All you want to do is hear that. Okay, item B, approval of an addendum to audit engagement letter dated August 25th, 2011. The action is needed on this. And Mr. Wood, do you want to explain that? You want to ask Nathan or...
Nathan is here, isn't he? If you want to speak to that real quick, please.
Thank you, Mayor Campbell. The auditors have come to us and requested that we sign this addendum to the original engagement letter that we, that we have signed. This is required due to the fact that the city has expended over $500,000 of federal money. Please be mindful that even if it's state money, or what we see as state money, a lot of times it's funded through the state, it's essential federal money. This is a requirement and it, there's not a lot of options to avoid. The price I had been told by the audit manager is going to be about five to six thousand dollars.
And you might explain why the immediacy, why they need to take action on it.
Yes, yes, sir, thank you. The auditors are planning on providing us with the financial statements and issuing an audit prior to March 31st, which is the deadline. And in order to get this, for them to proceed, they have to have this signed addendum.
Anyone have any questions on that?
No, that was the concern I had about the fee, it was not listed. It's five to six.
It is five to six, and I asked about...
The growing payment.
Yes, sir.
One other issue. We had requested that we, the council being involved in the audit, with direct communication. And this is the first piece of communication I've seen from them. I don't know how it's going, what's going on, when are they going to get it completed? We're looking at five months since the year. We have to wait again for another month or two. The year's half over. And any corrections we need to make on the audits, it's going to be too far down the line. We'll have to look at 2013. So are they close?
Yes, sir. They, he has informed me that they should be getting us a copy of the financial statements this week. It's Thursday, so hopefully I'll get those tomorrow.
Okay, and then when, we say week, or is it three to...
The city.
The city.
The finance department. We still have a few, the management discussion analysis, letter of transmittal, some of the, a few things to finish up within the audit.
Well, I would like to be able to review it myself.
Sure.
I don't know if the other council would like it, but I, you know, just put my two cents in.
Sure.
Do you think that we could add in there? I noticed the, it says actually they would be paid on a, on their regular hourly rate. If we, without any sort of maximum, could we have that as not to exceed 6,000?
I asked him when he told me the price range of five to 6,000. I specifically addressed it not being in this addendum. He led me to believe that because it was a per-hour charge, he could just give us an estimate right now of five to six. And hopefully it would be the lower.
I would suggest that, that we approve this, but subject to the maximum, not exceed 6,000. If I have any... Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
I would think that they have done it enough with other entities that they should be able to come in. And he's giving you a rough estimate, five to six. I think that's it, tops. And I would want to say six is max.
Not to say. Just be mindful that if we go to them and require them to put a stipulation in this addendum to that, the next time that the council would be able to vote on this would be March, in two weeks from now. And therefore, we possibly could not meet the March 31st deadline.
Well, without a special call meeting, if we saw as an emergency or urgent, would you do that?
How many hours do you think it's going to take to do this? Just your rough estimate.
From my auditing experience, I've been involved with about three or four single audits as they're called. I think that is a fair price. That is comparable to what we have, we would have charged. Probably a little bit less, but our audit clients were a little smaller.
When did we find out about this?
We initially considered a single audit about a month ago. But we went back and forth analyzing some of the expenditures, analyzing some of the revenues. Were they federal in nature? Were they state nature? Did they qualify? All the way up to about a couple of weeks ago, when we concluded that we were subject to the Single Audit Act.
Well, this here is dated August 25th, 2011. Just referencing the original agreement with them. That's the date of the original...
Yeah, that's when, when they did the...
What's the consequences, worst-case scenario, if we limited it to 6,000 and then they go over 6,000? What happens if March the 31st comes?
We'll have to file an extension with the state department of audits.
Is that a problem at all?
No, that is not a problem. The state...
All right, thanks. I'd like to motion, make a motion that we limit it to 6,000 and that we approve this request.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Not those favor signified, saying aye? Oh, no? All members have a motion.
Well, they probably need to be delayed if they are agreeable with those caps. Probably delay the next year.
If they're agreeable to that cap and they come to us with an estimate that's under that or an invoice under that, I don't see any reason why you should be delaying that.
Pardon? If we don't need to come back before council, would it...
I say no, no.
Okay, thank you. Discussion of the funds to be paid under the Northside Commerce Boulevard agreement. Wood, do you, do you double that figure that we had talked about? You know, giving some, I believe we voted at the last meeting to give some impact fees upfront on that. And the question arose as to how much that is. We've had two or three, I think, a month or so ago, Mr. Dyer thought it was like 25, 30,000. And I also got another estimate of 87,000, and I've also heard of 41,000. So I'm kind of curious as to if we know what that figure is. The latest estimate I had seen was the, was the higher of those. Nathan, hate to call on you again, but do you have any more accurate calculation on that?
Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven thousand, right. Is that, is that your calculation?
Yes, that, that is our most recent calculation.
Now, go ahead.
In looking at some of the documents, their work did not start until December 12th or something. And they're trying to claim a full year.
The land disturbance permit is dated December 12th. And according to the formula, they're asking for the full payment of...
In 2008.
2008, which amounts to $41,000, which seems excessive. I know if, you know, if you have a kid born on December 31st, you can claim it on your income tax, but this isn't the federal number. So I, I have it with Mr. Veris, what I think that we need to look at that number.
That's the reason I wanted this on here, so we could get some clarity as to what really the city is going to write the check for down the road here.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the cost estimates that our office had prepared came up with an 87, 739 figure was based upon information supplied by Northside representative of a cost for that phase of the road of $2,829,177. Our office has received, since that calculation, another dollar amount for the cost estimate, $2,629,177. Based upon this latest dollar amount, that one-year 2008 payment would be $38,892.31 instead of the original $41,851.07. In regards to the 2008 payment, the last thing that had received an email from a Northside representative talked in terms of having a land disturbance permit stamped and signed by Celia Clardy dated August of 2008. Taking that as it is, I've not found that land disturbance permit. Land disturbance permits generally do not get stamped and signed. They could have been referencing construction plans. There were some construction plans that were stamped and approved by the city in August of 2008. Taking that into account, if you factor it in August through the end of the year, that would be five months. The $2,008 dollar amount would be adjusted downward to $16,206. I would have to add up the payments for 2009, 2010, 2011.
So 16 would come off of what number have you got in there for the...
Forty-one.
So, okay, thirty, thirty point five, twenty-five. Twenty-five lost to eighty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, so...
Sixty-two thousand.
Okay. Is that what everyone would understand?
It's an obligation. I think that it's a little heavy on 2008, but we stamped it before we've done it.
The cost, cost estimates, they're cost estimates, is that correct?
That is correct. I have not had a chance to go over all of the supporting documentation that was submitted in regards to that total construction cost to verify that all of that would be impact, road impact, VEL.
Okay. Well, could we, could we know what the dollar figure would be by the next meeting? Because at that point, we would actually be signing that document anyway if that was...
I continue to work on this issue as we speak, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
What does, what does council mean, Mayor, relative to that cost calculation? Because that number, if I recall, can is significantly higher. I don't know about on a per-foot basis, but it's significantly higher than the, than the first stretch of road. Wasn't the first stretch of road like 1.8, didn't you tell them?
1.8, no, approximately, yes.
And we don't know if the 2.6, we don't know what all is included in that, is what you're saying?
I have a lot more detailed information that's been supplied. I've just not had a chance in my regular work schedule to go through all of that to determine if that is acceptable for road impacted credits. I've got to check that back against all of the information for the first phase of the construction of Commerce Boulevard as well. Mr. Pat, first number you gave us was 2,899 or something like that. And then you gave us a 2.629. So it looks like your second, look at it, it came down, right?
The 2.8 from the information that they supplied was an estimate and they feel certain that 2.6 is the final construction cost number.
Okay, so they...
It was an estimate.
So that did impact that 87?
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at a little bit more, no?
No, a little bit more, but... Yes, sir. That's why I had the additional calculations. I didn't have time to get the sum total for all four years.
So there will be a, sort of, you know, we'll have a final figure by 15th, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item D is approval for the mayor pro temp to sign the First Amendment to Development Agreement regarding Commerce Parkway. I will ask that the mayor pro temp be, by vote of this council on the 15th, they'll be allowed to sign that First Amendment agreement inasmuch as I did not sign the original... be allowed to sign that First Amendment agreement inasmuch as I did not sign the original agreement. And by signing the amendment, it would be concurring with the original, and so I would just ask that the mayor pro temp be allowed to sign that if this council chooses to do that. The item E, Discussion of Cherokee County Request Regarding Funding for Commerce Boulevard Extension to Highway one forty. You have the attachments in your package there, Cherokee County Board of Commissioners letter, the Commerce Boulevard funding email, and the hospital roadway email. Commerce Boulevard funding, I believe, was from the Department of Transportation. That's an attachment. Item E, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding that information?
Well, in the letter from the Cherokee County, it referenced the fact that there is the possibility that Regional Transportation Referendum passed in July two thousand and twelve, there's funds available for four hundred thousand per year for the city. So far, we haven't got to July two thousand and twelve, and I don't feel that was a good statement. It could be plenty, but the positioning on that makes us look like we're holding back. By all means, we want to get the road and the hospital built in there as fast as we can, but that one kind of...
Well, considering the risk, if the regional supplies did not pass, we wouldn't have that money at all, the four hundred thousand.
Yes, but we're not necessarily counting that one.
Anyone else have any question about this? Okay, well, this would be something we, that I think, give them some comment feedback on by the March fifteenth meeting.
Does anybody have any idea where we would get to one point four million if we decided...
That's a question. We'd be entitled to impact fee credits on work that they put in front of it, but that's different cash money, certainly, to us. Anyone else? Bill, did you get an answer?
Nope. No, sir, I did not, but I did pick one. Nobody knows?
I think that was the answer, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The next item is Discussion of the Ordinance or Policy Regarding Public Notice of New and or amended ordinances. Sometime back, and I think we want to just kind of clarify what we had discussed at that time. We had, state law doesn't require advertising on everything that we do, and some things it does require advertising and so forth. I'm of the position that we want to, even at the risk of slowing things down, do as much advertising as we need to do to make sure the public is informed about the issues and the discussion that we're having at city council meetings. And I believe we, Bobby, if you remember, I was, I think that we had instructed our clerk at that time, or whomever, I know the decision I thought was that we would treat any ordinance or amendment to an ordinance the same as if we were amending the charter. And that would mean two readings and advertising, any ordinance or amendment to an ordinance. Do you recall that?
I think that was in it, yes.
And so that would be, what exact process procedure would that be? The two readings?
Well, we have two readings anyway, so that's the difference. It's the advertising. I think there's, the clerk and I have problems. Either two or three advertising, and I didn't look back at the... Well, charter, remember, there's three advertising. The problem with that is just the timing. Doing three advertisements, it's just all... Well, they have to be within the two meetings, and we have two weeks. So trying to get three advertisements between those two weeks, and we do a first reading at the work session and a second reading at the regular meeting, it's just constantly an issue for the clerk about when is it okay to start advertising, when not? And so I think that's why she just was asking again, to have some clarification on that.
We would probably have, we would have ten days out of fourteen, roughly, that we would advertise three times, right? That shouldn't be too large, it?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. What does it cost per advertisement?
On Wednesday, it's ninety-one twenty for a block half, which is what we do, because it's more noticeable. Ninety-one twenty on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday is sixty-two forty, and Sunday is sixty-sixty.
So it's not a significant amount, then?
Well, we do it three times, it ends up to be a little bit more than two hundred dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One of the discussions that we had was the charge for these advertisements, and we felt it's better to over-communicate and have that versus not communicating as much as we should do. So we said, just go ahead with that to make sure we are communicating. So that was that part of that whole conversation.
Okay.
I just, one, the only clarification that I think would help the clerk is that she not start the advertising until the first reading has happened. Because that was the difficulty. We talk about an ordinance, and does she go ahead and advertise? If she can just, if we can say, she doesn't have to advertise until the first reading has happened. Get three in before the second reading. Is that okay?
That's fine. Is that placed on the internet, on our, on our homepage, the city? As far as the advertising goes, I don't know. Is it...
It's got to be by legal or...
Well, it has to be that too, certainly, but this would be in addition to that.
Well, frankly, it turns back to communicating. Okay, we don't drop that and go...
Yeah.
No, we got to have that.
That'd be good, if we could do that. Okay. Discussion of Downtown Business Rental Subsidy Program. This has to do with the adoption, perhaps, of the rent-a-car excise tax. Is there any discussion or questions regarding that? I mean, we all know we need as much business coming into Canton as we can get, and particularly the downtown area, where it's much more difficult to get people to come in than it is out near the interstate. Go ahead.
I had a question. I am most certainly in favor of it, and I want everybody clearly to understand that. When I'm looking at the businesses that are struggling, and my question, and maybe Ginger can address this, we actually had a phone conversation about it earlier, is our existing businesses that are struggling and contemplating closing or going out of business, would they be eligible to apply for this assistance as well?
Yeah, everybody would have to be able to do that. I mean, every business downtown, how would we determine who could do that? I mean, are we going to go into their financial books and take a look and say, hey, put to us, do you need this? Because we've got to have a logical way of going about this. We want to save downtown. I mean, that's what my job is, that's what the board's job is. I talked to sixteen property owners today. Every one of them were for this, every one of them. And of course, you know, they said, yeah, if you're going to hand out money, I think I have to take some of it, you know? But they said, all in all, what we need more than anything are more businesses downtown.
Oh, yeah, I talked with four today myself when this came up, all existing businesses, and sure, everybody's in favor of it, of course, but again, the old adage of retaining a business or client is typically a lot cheaper than going out and finding a new one. And I know we're all aware, there's a number of businesses struggling. I see Mike Deluca back there, and I talked with Mike's sister today, and...
I did also.
She told me this was okay to say, and they're contemplating closing down the Hoagie Shop. And if they would apply for this assistance as well, I would just like some assurance that their request would be somehow considered as meritorious as a new business. I mean, you're going to have to make the decision on new businesses as well, because you're certainly not going to be able to assist them all, and I don't envy you, because you're going to have to give some of them more, some of them less, some of them none. And it's, I understand that, who will make the decision? The Downtown Development?
No, the Main Street Board.
The Main Street Board would actually make the decision as a body, so I'm just asking that the existing people would be able to apply as well and be subject to the same criteria, or a fair, they'd be given a fair shake.
I personally don't have a problem with that, if they can go through the same steps, but this, again, it's something I'd have to take to the Main Street Board.
Well, you see, I, excuse me, I see this as a incentive to get business downtown, and what happens if you, if you open this wide open, what's going to happen is a business that you may give a rent incentive to is in business for six months, and you've assisted them, and their landlord hopefully has reduced the rent somewhat, but what if after six months, they say, we can't make it, we need another six months? Well, they're, I think they're cut off. I think they're cut off at that point. If you can't make it on your own, then, you know, maybe we want to try to help move them forward, but they're an existing business after that six months. Are we going to allow them to apply again for another six months, or is this a one-shot deal? I got, I think it's a one-shot deal, personally.
It is, it is.
The plan that was presented is an excellent plan. Now, carrying Mr. Bryant's comment forward, I'm surprised that the entire Riverstone shopping center up there hasn't shut their doors, because there's a big sign there that says, "Free Rent."
Exactly.
And all of those merchants have got to be screaming, I don't know, leave it, you know, we're going to free rent. So it's a very dedicated type of plan. Those merchants up there are smart enough to know that if you bring in additional foot traffic, you're going to have another opportunity to maybe get that customer coming to your store. So I think it's an excellent program. It doesn't need any tweaking. I think we should move ahead on it, on top of the fact, if we turn around and give all merchants, once again, where's the money coming from?
All right, I approached the merchants today about that, and I actually asked them, would you rather get a rent subsidy to help your business, or would you rather see more businesses come downtown? They all said, more businesses downtown. We have events that bring thousands of people into town, but they don't stay because there's not a place to shop, there's not enough to keep them downtown. Everyone wants more businesses.
Yeah, for comment, yeah.
I just spoke with several merchants last week after you spoke, and one of them was the Hoagie Shop, but several other ones too. You know, all of them said, yes, they'd love to have more businesses downtown, because it's a proven fact, if you've got something viable there, having new people are going to come in and see what the new is. But then also, what you've got to understand is that these people have been here in this town, fighting this fight for a long time, and they're going through this economic hardship, they may need a little bit of help. And I think we owe it to them first, before we owe it to the people coming in, because they pay these taxes, they pay these fees, they put their heart, sweat, and tears into that business, and we owe them first an opportunity to save that business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I understand where you're coming from, it's good, but they're in business. They are in a business, and therefore, it's their responsibility to manage their business. I'm sorry, that's a fact.
Now, one thing I will say, our town has changed tremendously in the last few years. No police officers anymore, no county businesses over there, and the county offices all moved out, Rita's bank shut down. This isn't these people's fault. And yes, I'm somewhat sympathetic. I grew up here, it means a lot to me and my family, but also, I think, and I'm not saying give them free money, I'm saying, you know, give them something along the same lines that you're going to give someone else that's going to be coming in, because they've already made the investment. These people, as the mayor says, have made the investment. And who's to say they might want to, they're saying, yeah, somebody will move out. These people have been here for years. They are here, these other people are here.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay. Jack, I felt the same way when I first heard a proposal that Ginger, excuse me, had placed, that we do need to take care of the people who were there first and fighting the fight. But we, I think we all have been around maybe to some of the same people, and somewhat I've changed them a little bit, because I approached some of the shops downtown, and they appeared to understand. Yes, they would like to have anything that we could give them, no question about it. But I think they're smart enough to know what reality is. If we give it to every business downtown, I'm afraid it's going to be so deluded, it's not going to have an impact. And then we, we got to have an impact in order to be successful, and if you give it to everybody, it's nice and fair, but we fail to do what we really need to do. And after talking to the people, I changed my mind. Now, I do think, I'm very strong about this, is that the landlords got to have some skin in the game.
I have, I have met with some of the landlords, and they are willing to give concessions.
I think another thing we might ask, is that maybe the chamber can give some leaders, some education in running some businesses?
Definitely. I think we should offer technical assistance or any kind of assistance, business plan assistance, anything like that that would help anybody.
Do we, Ginger, do we use, or has the downtown merchants even called upon the chamber to maybe give some assistance in the form of education or assistance in that regard?
Many of them are chamber members, but they haven't requested that, but they are aware of some of the workshops they do.
Well, they are aware, but if we put something together for, for just them, and have it here close to them, maybe, yes, they are aware of it, but do they really go and drink the water? No. But I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, Jack, I understand. Jack had it.
The other thing I'd like to say is, you know, we have got to do more to the city. First Lotting is a great thing, I, you know, we saw that happen last fall, we've got a farmer's market now, but still, towns close down at twelve o'clock on Saturday and don't be open until Monday at eight o'clock. That's got to stop. Man and I talked about this before, several of you, that we've got to have more events. We got to look for an excuse to have an event. That's the way you build business. You know, we don't have anything out there, very few shops, I go by today, very few shops have anything with St. Patrick's Day coming up, there's an event coming up right away. We don't have anything other than First Lotting that is pushing that. The theater, we could have that open, and we could have it for very small things, we could have people coming in here every day. We've got to find a reason to bring people to town, so they'll be going to these shops.
I think, I think one thing that we have talked about tonight is going to create some additional activity downtown, that's an alcohol ordinance.
Yes, definitely.
That change, if that is implemented, I think will make a difference, and there will be more events downtown, hopefully, and that will generate more business.
I would like to also point out, though, that in the past three years, we've created fifteen new events for downtown. There's something going on almost every month, and twice or more a month. For Contabrun, they're having a St. Patrick's Day bash, they're going to put on a big party for downtown. There are things that are happening. I feel like we've made a lot of progress, but again, people come to these events, and it's great. people come to these events and it's great, but they, they have no reason to stay. They don't stay and shop.
One, one comment I would like to make is, all of us that have gone to the Mayor's Day intervention, we have seen from GMA what various towns have done to revitalize their downtown. And I agree with Mr. Goodwin that Canton has changed in the last few years. And our problem, as I see it, is we're trying to make it back what it was and it ain't going to be because we can't bring shops into downtown that are competing with Canton Marketplace. It's just not going to happen. We have to have some creative thinking as some of these other municipalities have had to bring in shops that want, where people will come in and look for, for things that they don't get at Canton Marketplace.
Exactly.
And, and there's also, last year, I think it was sometime last year, I wanted to get away from the house because my wife had ladies over playing mahjong, so I went to the Woodstock City Council meeting and there was a young man there that they hired from Kennesaw State who had done a study on how much money entertainment brought into their community. And I can't remember the numbers, but it was significant that people come and they'll spend ten bucks to go to the theater, but then they wind up spending another four or five dollars in the city for something. So, what I think we need, I mean, I, I feel sorry for the businesses that are there, but I don't think we should subsidize them because I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers. Well, of course, this is going to come from that rental car tax, but, but I think we should subsidize the new businesses coming in and the old businesses are going to have to fend for themselves and, and like Mr. Beresford said, it is a business.
And this program is intended to help all the businesses downtown. Again, talking with the merchants today, given a choice, they would rather us bring more businesses in rather than subsidize their rent.
Well, I'd just like to leave you with a quote from Tim, the owner of the Forkin Tavern, when I spoke to him today, nice fellow. 1:30 in the afternoon, there's one person in his restaurant eating and it was empty. And when I told him about the program, he said, "I wish it was six months ago."
I wish it was too.
Good news is it's now. I'm not going to help him with it.
Mr. Bishop?
I'd want to know what action step we need to do to move this project ahead? Should that be on the?
Well, this will be on the agenda, I believe, for action. You do have the, let's see.
Considering it's the first reading of the ordinance and the ordinance is prepared.
Right. Which I believe you have there at your, your package. I did think we should consider this as the first reading of that ordinance and then the second reading would be coming on the fifteenth.
And just one other point, there's discussion, Mr. Bill, there's one other point. There was a concern about the turn down of the economy and its impact on the merchants. Also, there's an impact on this city. We barely hang on with our nails. So, you know.
Not just from these companies in the city, Mr. Beresford.
I, I know where it's coming, I know that. But, you know, also, there is an impact on this city.
That's right. If we help everybody, then we will have a better impact. If we have more events, we'll have more.
And, and you know, we're getting a park, Edwell Park, you know what it's going to be called, we're going to have an ambulance theater there and we're going to have events taking place down there and hopefully they'll come back into downtown for the evening to have a cool water. So, it's, we've got things going.
What mechanism, Ginger, will you have to track results of this? I mean, I, I just don't want us to just start throwing money at new people and not maybe have a report in a year to the day after it starts as to how many businesses have closed down, how many new businesses are in here, you know, to measure what we're doing. I mean, if, if there's a better way for us to use, and I understand you're estimating about $36,000 a year is what we're talking about.
That's an estimate.
An estimate, but if there's a better way to use that $36,000 to promote all of downtown, I mean, I, I just see slippery slopes when we're going to be selecting certain ones to help, certain ones to not help. Who do we help? Well, if we, like your example today, well, if it's, say, a Thai restaurant wants to come in, well, you gotta decide, are they going to be competing with the Forkin Tavern? Will they be competing with Zakel and Michael Luca and them or will they not? I mean, it's, how much money do you give them? Then what if another one comes in, we don't have any money? It's just, oh man, I just see, I just see a tough road to hoe there, but if you can, you know, try for a year and show us what the results are, because there may be a better way. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant, I'm al, I'm also required by DCA to report all these figures as far as how many jobs we create every year, how many businesses open, how many jobs we lose, how many jobs, how many businesses that close. That's something we already do and that's, you know, already there, it's easy to measure. We're working on some.
What was one comment, Ken?
There was an excellent article in the newspaper last year discussing the downtown, how many businesses, new businesses came in, we lost a few, and it was an excellent report. And I thank you for that report.
Okay. Thank you, Ginger, for saying that. So, we will, with additional information, discussion, we can do that at March fifteenth. I have an A and A discussion and update on Canton's ADA transition plan. I believe that's your report, Mr. Bryant.
It is. We'll call Mr. Patton and encourage him to make that brief as he can, but I'm going to just, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, Mayor, council members. Back in October of last year, the mayor's office received a letter from Georgia Department of Transportation requesting the city provide the GDOT, City of Canton's original ADA transition plan. This was a requirement of the Americans with Disabilities Act that was adopted in 1990. We could not find anything of that nature in city records. Talking with GDOT personnel, majority of local governments across the state of Georgia did not develop an ADA transition plan. The GDOT personnel have given local governments until June 30th of this year to develop an ADA transition plan. basic elements that were required to include within this is the designation of a responsible employee as the ADA coordinator, make that known through advertisements, website postings with policies and programs. There has to be a public notice of non-discrimination. The city has to establish a grievance procedure. This also requires the city to undertake a self-evaluation, self-evaluation survey that looks at policies, programs, facilities, including rights of way. We have to identify physical and programmatic barriers to comply with any section of 503, I believe it is. Some of the physical barriers could be involved with the parking, path of entry, doors, service counters, restroom. Programmatic barriers include items such as building signage, customer communications, access to public telephones, emergency notifications, communications, participation opportunities for events sponsored by the city. We have an ADA transition plan committee established with the city and with working forces. Some of the additional attachments that I included for informational purposes in the packet tonight, it includes a couple of pages from the City of East Point, Georgia's ADA transition plan. We're utilizing that as a model for what we're going to do in moving forward. ACCG and GMA, both on their websites in regards to the development of these ADA transition plans, have a link to the East Point site. Their plan basically has a survey in blank form and they say in the next year, we're going to complete the survey and put together the listing of all of the programs, policies, actions that would be required to meet the requirements of ADA. We're going to follow that similarly. We have already begun some of the surveys for some of these programmatic and physical barriers. We would propose to include that information in our ADA plan that we would submit to GDOT as well as the Blana Regional Commission. They have asked for a copy of the transition plan. Our office is working on a survey questionnaire form for local government implementation for the regional plan, Plan 2040. And an item in that is, they've asked for City of Canton's ADA transition plan as well. Purpose in giving you a heads up is that we are going to be coming back with some of these items. We will propose, this is going to be an ongoing program because some of these obstacles that are identified are going to cost some money to fix. We will, once we complete our surveys and inventories, we'll have information about what those barriers are and what the cost of overcoming those barriers would be. All the transition plans that we've looked at and researched across the country generally look at five to 10-year timeframes in which to try to overcome all those obstacles. I'm here to answer any questions.
Yeah, let me ask a question. That sounds like something we need to have done before anyway, but how did the Department of Transportation get involved in our buildings and so forth?
Federal dollars, I think it is.
So, it doesn't anything to do with transportation, ADA or anything like that?
Part of it has to do with rights of way and barriers to rights of way such as curve cuts, crosswalks.
But does it have to do with buildings?
It all has to do with halfways, course buildings, but the whole pile of two of ADA gets to all policies, programs, buildings and functions of that nature. And we're in the process of beginning to do these surveys for all of the programs, policies, departments, buildings, have that comprehensive list. We will not complete that by June 30th, but I just felt that the council needed to be aware. This was supposed to have been done in a timeframe between 1992 and 1995. I have found records where the city council was made aware of the ADA requirements. They did appropriate some money in 1992 to fix handicap ramps and things, or sidewalks to the tune of $135,000. I have some documentation that the city did do some things that that still doesn't meet this requirement. Bottom line is federal dollars and federal government are now coming down on other agencies that fund money through them and if it didn't in place, potentially might lose some funding sources.
Okay, Mr. Goodwin?
How long do you think it'll take you to lift this again? Is this going to be something that you will know in six months or?
Are you talking about complete survey and the dollar cost now? That's probably going to take 0.6 months in a year to fully complete that and put that together.
In your opinion, is this something that's going to be up in billions of dollars?
I would certainly hope not. Hopefully, the city has already addressed a lot of these matters when we go in and do some of these surveys. Because we are also going to include within this ADA transition plan, looking at things that are owned by Canton Building Authority and other authorities. There's two trains of thought in regards to that with the authorities is either the city can go ahead and do it and include it within their ADA transition plan, or you require that authority to have their own ADA transition plan, which in turn falls back to city staff again.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Any of them?
I'm a student. We're talking about city-owned properties. Yes, only. Right, all city-owned properties. Yes. Not private street, just things that are owned by the city. Correct.
Y'all, I think the biggest problem we're going to have is the sidewalk. The biggest single problem we have. Okay, thank you, Ken. Update on the reservoir office building and skater system for the reservoir? Mr. Goodwin?
I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we stand with these two projects. We intend to advertise them for construction within the next month or so. Both projects are 90 to 95% complete design.
And what's the cost on the Taj Mahal at the reservoir?
That is an ADA. Yes, that is a matter of fact. We've had a contractor, two contractors, give us an order of magnitude estimate and it's ranging between 300 and 500,000 dollars.
Now, look, have those funds been appropriated? I said? No, no.
Well, we.
But that doesn't mean it has to be approved.
Yes. What about the skater? The skater is going to be in the order of 800,000 to 100,000 dollars.
That, that's the one. No, I wouldn't make City of Canton's cost.
No, that's total cost, the city's cost is 25%.
So, 100,000 and 35,000 dollars. Way longer maybe to be, that's.
Yeah.
Right. Now, the thing is, is that some of this, I believe, is all cheap money and I believe they're putting the pressure on to, to use that money.
But it wasn't, not on us, that's correct. That would only apply to Cal.
The only, on the skater thing, I think the project is not getting too soon, it is a little memo or your packet about sole sourcing of some of the equipment on the skater, which is like you're having to match with the skates.
So, we would, we would, you would need approval from this council on the approval or disapproval or action or no action, I guess, on the, the building and the skater system by the end?
Approval to what, to build, to advertise?
I guess to advertise.
To, I mean, approval to advertise?
To build for bid.
Well, you're going to need approval to accept a bid, there's no doubt about that. And, and if it's unlikely, that would happen, I don't know that I would spend the money on the bidding, but.
With, I would, you guys can only vote at the next meeting, we'll probably quit at the next meeting.
Are you ready to go design-wise on the building, Dave?
We're, we're close, but taking into a timeframe of, you know, if we don't get it in, at least authorize us to advertise at the next meeting, we'll have to wait till the end of April to push everything else out.
What directs us is the, what, what type of building or what has to go into that building? What's telling us what needs to be done? I, I'm still struggling with a half million dollar building up there.
Well, there's, there's three offices, there's a conference room, there's a small lab, there is a skater room for the part of the southern project, and then there's a garage.
Two restaurants?
Actually, it's a six restaurant.
Well, I mean, that was planned originally, two restaurants?
Yeah, there's one restaurant.
So, we're going to have three offices, so we're going to have three people up there. We're going to build a half million dollar building.
There'll be two people up there now initially and then, you know, a lot in the future.
Am I just crazy here? I, I just don't understand why we need a half a million dollar building for two people.
We'll make them senior citizens and they won't have to pay that.
We were young when we dropped here.
Can't we just, can't we do something to? Can't we do something that's nice, but doesn't have to be a half a million dollars?
Well, we've actually gone through a lot of effort to minimize the cost.
Can we put a fire station there?
On this skater program, it is critical that we haven't done for a possibility of failure, or is it something that the EPD, EPA and XYZ have requested at some future date?
There's actually a lot of benefit to that. It allows us to get the status of everything remotely at an all time. Right now, we're flying by. We don't have any history or trending of when the equipment comes on, when it comes off. There's just a lot of things that.
How come it was not in the original?
I believe it was in the original plan, but I don't know if it was in the original contract. I think it was always planned, but not included in the initial.
So thirty million that we threw out initially, they were afraid to put the extra million in there? You know, I mean, I'm just wondering. I mean, it was something that was gonna be needed and now we're looking at another add-on.
I was, I was actually told in January, February of 2008 that the, there was no plans to have a building there. That's what I understood, which I thought was really crazy because you do need somebody up there and I think you do need a building there. But I'm not, I'm not sure you need one, a half million dollar building. And I would assume that the original plans must have, must have assumed that the skater system, if it, which obviously you need something like that too, but was, was like being operated from somebody's office or something, you know, or being monitored from, from another location away from the reservoir. But I think we do need, we do need a building there. We need somebody there. We need somebody that's there and knows what's going on. They need to know who's in and out of there. And, you know, to me, it's a, you know, to me, it's sort of an attractive nuisance to some. I don't want anyone getting drowned in there, even though it could happen. But now, and the question has been, what's the difference between this and the river? Well, man did not make the river, okay? But we did make this reservoir. We built it and I think we have an obligation to protect citizens from danger there and to know who's in and out. I do know that at the Hollisque Laketham reservoir in the northeast part of the county, they have a office building there and they also have a gate and that, which is access point. And they bring people in, they let them pay five dollars, I guess, it's still that, and they can fish, pull a boat in, they can fish all day, but they have to be out at a certain time. And they also, during the summer months, of course, that period is extended because of the daylight hours and so forth. But I, you know, I really feel like we need to monitor what goes on there for sure, but I just don't know that it would take a half million dollars to, to shelter someone to do what needs to be done up there.
What does Cobb have to say? They want that million dollar building?
Yep, they want it.
Let me remind y'all now, regardless of which way you go on the building, you approved, if I'm not mistaken, a thirty thousand dollar architectural fee last year, is that right? And I don't know how much discussion there was about the cost of the building, I don't remember that. But one of the things, Mr. Mayor, you might wanna do is ask Mr. Robillard to come explain why this building costs this much. I, I understand the question. If it, based on the description, it would seem to me to be a house and you certainly can build a house for a lot less than four hundred fifty thousand dollars to accommodate a couple of people. So I understand the concerns, but you know, you might have a professional explanation that accompanies what those numbers.
Anyone else have a question? We will have this on the agenda at the, I assume, at the next meeting. What do we need? What additional information will we have at the next meeting?
I think the question, whether or not you want to approve advertising for bid or just wait until bids came in, I think that's.
The question is to whether we want to.
We need approval to advertise for bidding.
Well, to spend your money, no doubt.
Really approve the plan.
If we approve the bid.
That's really what you're, well, that's what you're really deciding. Do you approve the plan and therefore start the process? Y'all routinely authorize the bidding of the, you haven't bothered with any bids, so that's not usually what you do. But I would be approving the plans so that the bidding process can start.
Okay, okay, the plans are in our. So has, has everyone seen those plans or sketches or anything like that? So could we, could we make sure the council gets copies of our? And with elevations and so forth and maybe cost estimates and everything, and then we'll, we would either include the plan or not at the next meeting?
Has Cobb approved the plan?
Yeah, they're ready to go.
They're ready to go, so they.
They've looked at it, they're pretty ready to go.
See, I think, I think, I think a difference between Cobb and Cherokee right now is that they're, they're basically staff-driven totally and I think this council, at least for my part, wants a little more input into what happens and rather than just give it free hand. And I think, I think that's what they did pretty much. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just don't leave, you might wanna speak to the public access issue because you were there, I believe, and the company as well has been intimately involved in that. I think y'all made out on the side recently.
Yes, we staked off an area for public access that essentially is the intersection of Baycon plus Parkway. We had Representative CPA there and said, fine, go with it. Get an agreement and move on.
Then I have cleared a draft of the lease circulating. We may have that over to.
Now, are we leasing?
We will be leasing from.
Is it, is it a lease or is it an access?
Well, they, they want it to be a lease.
Then how do we do multi-year?
Well, with the Canton Building Authority does the lease.
It's a one-year.
It's a one-year lease.
One-year with renewal?
It's automatically renewed. We're not gonna pay anything anyway, at least it's what I'm paid. There's no money to benefit you.
Okay, anyone else?
Make sure you're aware of, of a meeting you might already be aware of and you might mark the calendars. Wednesday, the seventh of March, I think in this room, our staff engineer is gonna be conducting a little informational presentation on the Waleska Street paving project. The mayor asked me to speak to the circumstances of this weekend. Can I do that a little bit in depth? I don't think it'll take a lot of time, but I want you to understand some background there. The city has been in the water business, apparently, from what we, we can gather, since nineteen twenty-one or earlier, but at least nineteen twenty-one when the first water plant was built. The current water plant was constructed in nineteen fifty-four. It was added on to in nineteen sixty-two and then it was partially upgraded in nineteen ninety. So the basic plan is almost sixty years old, the most recent upgrades, most recent upgrades are about twenty-two years old. So it's probable that we have water lines in the ground that correspond to the age of the first plant. It could be ninety years plus or less. In the, just over two years that I've been here, we've had six major water line breaks, not sewer, but water line breaks. Marietta Highway at Hickory Flat, Waleska Highway in front of Walgreens, Waleska Highway about halfway between Walgreens and where Rhine Parkway comes in, Marietta Highway behind Comcast, Sandy Hook last fall, and then Riverstone Parkway this past weekend. Two of those six have been the result of a direct and immediate impact on the line. The one on Waleska Highway going up toward Rhine Heart was a result of a fire hydrant being hit by a truck and causing a rupture in that line. The one Marietta Highway behind Comcast was the result of some utility work, a tractor or some type of heavy equipment running over and rupturing that line. The other four have been attributable to an indirect and a less foreseeable cause. We've got four major water lines that leave our plant. Think of the plant as being the, the heart and the four lines as being our, our major arteries. Two of them are twelve-inch and two of them are ten-inch lines. Both of our twelve-inch lines have been broken within the past several months. Of the four that I mentioned that did not have the direct impact caused, of those four, which would, again, would be Marietta Highway, Hickory Flat, Waleska in front of Walgreens, Sandy Hook and then Riverstone. Of those four, three of those four have been directly on or very, very near to the bank of the river. Marietta Highway, Hickory Flat was a result of some major erosion that occurred as a recent flood. Sandy Hook, just down the hill, the railroad tracks, is the result of a tree twisting across that line and vertically splitting that line. It just tore that line and that line was probably eighteen deep. The leak Sunday was across the creek bed, just this side of the camp lawns. All four of the breaks that have occurred that were not the result of a direct impact have occurred within less than a mile of a water plant. I don't know how many square miles the city is, but, but all four of those major line breaks have occurred within a mile of the water plant, which is not surprising because that's probably where our very oldest lines are located. The line that broke Sunday was estimated by our staff engineer to be plus or minus fifty years old. I don't think he had the carbon dating done, but his estimate was about fifty years old. We've got about eight miles of line which falls in that radius, that one mile radius of the water plant. I've had two different expert sources tell me that they would estimate that it would cost us between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars per mile. It would vary depending on the line's size, on how much boring had to be done, the pottery and things of that nature, but it would probably run between four and five hundred thousand dollars per mile to replace those lines. Now, particularly with respect to this past Sunday, I noticed at nine forty-six Sunday morning that I was out of water. The reason I know that time is because I checked my call history and at that moment I called my next door neighbor to see if he was out of water. And he was. I made another call or two to be sure that it was not just my problem. At nine forty-eight, I made the first of what would turn out to be numerous calls all day long to the city engineer. I spoke with the UP manager at nine forty-nine AM. At nine fifty AM, I made a call to the mayor at nine fifty-one AM to the fire chief and shortly after, thereafter, to the police chief. I asked each one of them to assign their own duty personnel to driving and looking for any signs of a line rupture. By ten thirteen, less than thirty minutes after the first call, the UP manager called and told me that the rupture had been located. The line graphs from the skater system at our water plant reveal that in just over twenty-five minutes, between nine oh nine and nine thirty-five, our Amos Road tank lost over seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. As soon as possible, we began preparing the necessary data for release through our telephone emergency notification system. We notified state EDD and the local health department. We made arrangements to bulk transport water to the hospital and assisted living facilities. City staff began directly, in some cases, door-to-door notifying as many of the restaurants as possible of the problem. The city engineer, the fire department, the police department and the UP staff reacted swiftly and commendably, first in locating and then working unceasingly to repair the leak. In fact, I literally had to direct the city engineer to finally go home that evening because he had done everything he could do. Our UP staff, our engineer and our fire department leadership opened and closed various valves and redirected flows to enable minute locations to resume basic water service as quickly as possible. I understand we had water service returned to the hospital by around six PM. I regret as much as anyone that the problem occurred, but I'm certainly pleased with the responsiveness and commitment of our staff. The question, I guess, though, is what we can do in the future. One, we can work to replace main lines that have been in the ground for longer than most, if not, in fact, all of us have been on this earth. Possibly in some cases seventy-five or so years, literally. But that will be expensive and will take time. More immediately, we can develop and implement a better system where more valves can be strategically installed to allow broader and more immediate isolation of distressed system sections so that we minimize the number of people that are affected when problems do occur. This city council's investment in the distribution and collection system inventory that we completed last year can be particularly helpful to us in that regard. And I would respectfully encourage council to think carefully as you deliberate our water and sewer rate structure in the coming months. We're told that upgrades to our sewer plant could run in the seven million dollar range, not counting upgrades to our lift stations of a million and a half or two million dollars. If it is decided that we need a new water plant, it hasn't been, but if it is decided that we need a new water plant, that could be twenty or more million dollars. And replacing many of the older lines in the older section of the city could easily be four or five billion dollars. Under the very best of circumstances, we could be facing a cap of thirteen or fourteen million dollars for water and sewer system needs even without building any water plant. Like you, I wish there was an easy fix, but our system is almost approaching at least a hundred years old and we're simply going to have to invest in bringing those particularly aged and vulnerable components current. As the mayor has said on several occasions, we don't have many problems that little more money can solve. Today, we had a natural gas line rupture inside of city limits. That's not a city utility, but the result inconvenienced some people and some businesses even had to close. In recent months, we have endured several power outages. Utility service disruptions are an unwelcome but realistic fact of life. I wish we could say that we would never have another disruption in natural gas, electricity or water service, but these things happen. We know that everyone is affected by water mainline. Individual homes and families, families, business owners, employees, the city government, everyone feels the pain and endures the unwelcome consequences. But we will continue to work to minimize the number of occasions when they happen and to minimize the impact to the public when they do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A mistake. I heard with seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Is there a gauge? Is there alarm? Is there a light flashing on top when that thing suddenly starts losing water?
There is a, there is a skater system at the plant itself and this is the line chart. It's my understanding, I'm not a water and sewer expert, Mr. Trotter's here, Mr. Otagian's here, the folks that are much more technically versed than I am can speak to this, but this line chart, it's my understanding, Mr. Bearford, Mr. Bearford, this system, for lack of a better term, lips between our six tanks and it takes it some period of time. It doesn't fixate on just one and to the exclusion of the others. So you've got some period of time during which this drop probably was occurring, but they've got some margins, they've got some tolerances, as I understand it, in this thing. And when it got down to the seven or eight foot level, I can't tell you how many gallons that would have been. I think that's when the bells start going off because these pumps, from what I understand, and again, Bob Trotter could speak to this better than I could or Davey the one, these pumps kick on and off, you know, during, during the.
To replenish.
End point of the while period to replenish them so they, so the, the, the levels go up and down.
My question, Mr. Wood, is UP. My question, Mr. Cruet, is, U.P. is sitting at, are you looking at that chart, twenty-four hours a day?
No, they would be sitting, this was a printout here.
Okay, so, printout doesn't do us much good, if we can see what happened. What system did we have on the tank for, on our tanks, if we had any?
I'm not really, really well versed with your skated system, but my understanding is, from talking to Brady, some of your other folks, they have talked to him also, but according to Brady, the way their system works is they have three alarms on the tanks, on the skated system on the tanks. One is a high level alarm that says this tank is about to overflow. One is a low level alarm that says this tank is getting dangerously low. And I think that's the number nine that's talking about it. And then there apparently is another alarm that says this tank has lost a certain percent of its volume over the last hour, which is, I think Brady said it was three percent. There's some number there that triggers an alarm. And there is lifetime, as was said, because the skated system holds your tanks, does run, checks your tanks, and I think it also checks some other components in the system, maybe some lift station wells.
My question is, there was an alarm, is an alarm, or is no alarm, that we learned somebody, we lost seven hundred thousand gallons of water? That's my question.
But you lost through a twelve inch main, that whether it was detected ten minutes earlier or not would not have made any difference. It would not have made any difference. Bob, will a twelve inch main drain seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons in thirty minutes in that length of time?
I think so. If the tank is, it depends on the level of the water pressure on pushing on that opening in the pipe, but yeah.
Obviously, it's going to get less and less, right? That pressure's going down.
It'll go down, but it's, but it's uncertain. And we just need to look at it.
No, no, I mean, I think, I think Mr. Barrett Ford's point is, perhaps, then we have a more advanced system that would let us know, you know, earlier in the process, and maybe so y'all can look at these tolerances and see when it triggers and that sort of thing. But I think in this case, I don't think this, it was gone so far, it was gone before you knew it almost.
I did talk to Brady, and he said they were talking to the group that put the skated system in, and they were going to try to come up with something that would maybe accelerate the initiation of the emergency.
But I don't think it ought to go unemphasized that the speed with which U.P. in particular detected this leak, and the fact that they reacted as quickly as they did to trying to isolate it as much as they could isolate it in, there were sections that had, and the boil water advisory, everybody had to have their sewer, but at least a lot of these people had water service back. We all thinking, might have had water service back that afternoon, didn't you? At the hospitals, I didn't. Frankly, it hit me as hard as anybody, at the end of six thirty Monday morning. They identified that leak within about an hour of, an hour after the tank was full. They had located that leak, and I know Chief Floyd and I had spoken when this thing first erupted, because it could have been like this one on the river. If this leak, nobody had a clue where it was at the time. If it was off in the woods somewhere, it was not map vesting itself. It could have been hours before anybody looked at it.
I mean, I know, I know you can do math. You can look at the tank, you know its volume, you know what the pressure is at the time it's full, you know, on, I guess, a sliding scale, what happens as it, when it's half full. Can you do the calculations and tell me how long it would take to drain that tank through the pipe that is exiting that tank if it is full?
If I can get a couple of drawings, I think we've come up with a pretty good approximation. Yeah, I just need to know.
You ought to be pretty exact on that math, wouldn't you?
Well, I mean, engineering is nice approximation, but I'm not going to tell you within two percent, but I think we'd get pretty close, I mean, the way you do the calculations.
That's a lot of water to drain a tank in thirty minutes. You know, it'd take a big hoe to do that, wouldn't it?
Well, but you got, I don't know what the elevation is, Mayor, I'll get down, but I would say that's certainly a pretty good response to find a leak in that period of time. And I guess that's one thing, and I'll pre, not much, is one of the things the city ought to consider is working on some of the easements, because if it'd been way back in the woods somewhere, it'd been really hard to find. And this one, I guess, was not so hard to find, maybe some easement work down the road would be of help, because with this many old pipes in the system, there will be some value for it.
Thank you. All right, the next item, discussion of the private street resolution, Mr. Barrett Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the citizens who have waited patiently this evening for this topic to come up, and please bear with me. I want to go through a little bit of background so that there's a better understanding of what transpired through this period of time. I moved into Canton in two thousand and five into the Pinnacle Place neighborhood, which is part of River Green. We were informed by the developer, by a sellout of our home, streets would be turned over to the city, being that we lived in the city limits. The assumption by us, if you live in the city limits, you live on city streets. Well, as you make assumptions, sometimes you find out you made the wrong assumption. But as the sellout was completed, I was informed by Mayor Cruet that this is not true. Should have been told that the streets are in fact private streets. Should have been told, that's correct. But he did tell our developer that he needed to put the vinyl top coat on one of the streets before he left the scene of the crime. And this was done. In the summer of two thousand and six, we found out that we should have had sidewalks per city code, but none was there. Due to the city allowing the developer to squeeze in extra lots, sidewalks took up space, therefore, this blew away the sidewalks. Spoke to Mayor Cruet again about the sidewalks. He said, yeah, that was wrong, shouldn't have done it. So he fined the developer twenty-five thousand dollars. The city did get a check for twenty-five thousand dollars. As I continued to investigate over the next few years, by two thousand and ten, I met with Mayor Hoggood, and I said, whatever happened to the twenty-five thousand dollars? He said, I don't know, but he had checked into it. He found out that was sitting in a bank account, waiting to be used. I suggested that we were looking at sidewalks for Bowlin Park, and we should take that twenty-five thousand dollars and use it for sidewalks for the city in Bowlin Park, thanks to the residents of Pinnacle Place, and that was done. I looked into the private street issue, as I found that not only my community was swindled by the underhandedness of the developers and the total disregard by the city not requiring developments to be met to code. Therefore, I got very involved with the city government, served on various committees, and eventually ended up being elected to council. Now, there's another issue I want to touch on. Misinformation has been passed out. It was referred to the fact that we have an issue on private streets. I had a citizen who said she voted for me, and she was very concerned that if the letter that she received was true, she would be very disappointed in me. I felt a need to publicly address this letter. Now, in the letter, it states that there's twelve point five miles of streets that need to be taken care of, and well, this is wrong. Basically, we're looking at private streets amounting to eight point one six, and that is in the areas of where these homeowners associations are located. It was stated that there was an old community once gave, now the private street, they want to be part of it. That's true, they did take down the gates. That little community down in Creek is point four, five miles, top coated, finished, so there's nothing to do on that street. Prominent point is, little over two miles, it's top coated. Canton Heights, it's point six three miles, some top coated, some needs to be top coated. Diamond Ridge, over a mile, and it's a mixture of top coated, needs some top coating. Villas at Riverstone, just under a mile, it's top coated, it's finished. Pinnacle Place, River Green, just over a half mile, top coated, nothing to be done, it's ready to go. Now, in calculating the original number of twelve point five miles, we come up with a number roughly around one point four million. And actually, looking at the streets that if they need to be done immediately, we're talking three hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is based off of Georgia DOT estimation of eighty thousand dollars per mile. At some future date, all city streets will fall into the rotation, the current city streets and also the private streets. These will have to be done as needed in the rotation that we require. Interesting enough, back in the golden era, there was a little development. The street name is Winookie, and it's, it was a gravel road, and the developer ran into a little bit of trouble, so they turned around and dedicated to the city this street. It was a little better than Cow Path. Now, the city took it with no problem. Last year, we spent sixty, excuse me, last year, we spent ninety-one thousand dollars to bring that street up to city standards. It had to have special top coating, special where the water could run through it, to bring it to that so that that street would comply. This year, we're looking at another twelve thousand dollars because there's a drainage issue. That street hangs off the side of the cliff overlooking Animal River. But it is, it was a city street, no problems. It was stated in the letter that I, last year, brought forth, or actually maybe longer than that, a proposal to have city council entertain the thought of a resolution to bring in these private streets in discussion. I hope the council does not take this as a shock, but I'll say it. At the time, council was playing silly games with me, therefore I could not get second to my motion, let alone any motions that I might have brought forward. It has been discussed, I brought it back up again, the mayor appointed a council, I mean, a committee. The committee consisted of myself, Mr. Huffman, and Mr. Bryant to look into these streets. As stated, River Green community has five point seven six miles. It is still underdeveloped by the John Wildin Homes, and it is a number that's misleading because we're only talking about a half a mile, not five point seven six. Now, it's also stated that Mr. Cummings lives in River Green, he's sympathetic to the issues as is the mayor. The mayor, Mr. Huffman, Mr. Cummings, and myself are all totally informed by the issues. We see what needs to be done and how it happens. The wrong was placed upon the owners of these properties. Mr. Bryant, who is on the committee, declined to attend the meeting, therefore he does not understand the issues. Hopefully, after...
Hold on, hold on. No, sir. Hopefully, after you're going to abuse me of something, John, I told you a week and a half before the meeting, I could not attend. I'd be glad to reschedule it. I will still attend your meetings. Don't lie about me.
I will continue, thank you for the interruption. The makeup of the committee equals to playing with loaded dice. I take that as a personal attack on my integrity, and it is an insult. Being totally misinformed by the letter, it is a great disservice to our city by not acknowledging the facts. He really needs to do his homework. Now, the issue is, we're looking at over eight hundred homeowners who are living in these HOAs that the city, using the signature block on the plants, signed off on, and it is certified by the mayor that all business that will be done on those plants will be conducted to city code. Now, I don't want to take too much more time, but... Now, to the facts. The issue of private streets, how did they come about? Well, the need for the city to attract developers to build Canton during the golden building out in two thousand two, two thousand and eight. To attract developers, the city chose to turn a blind eye to the city code of ordinance. City code of ordinance states under Part Three, Development Code, Appendix B, Development Regulations, Section Two Hundred, Subdivision Regulations, where private streets are allowed, they must be built to city standards. What we continue to run into is they weren't built to city standards, so therefore, we can call them private streets and get away with it. To not require the developer to follow the code, this allowed the city to gain additional impact fees, building fees, to feed the ever growing demand of Canton, a city desired to be located in, i.e. golf courses, the Y, the theater, all time favorites, the rest of all the parks. The developers could squeeze more lots onto their property by reducing street requirements, thereby making bigger profits. Cutting corners on storm drains that are specked out at four by four, they put them in three by three. Rollback curving was quick and easy versus a standard code square back. No sidewalks in some areas against city code violated. This all came at the expense of those citizens who were told that private streets should become a street when they were built out complete. As we all know, those developers had gone bankrupt or moved on, name changes, and the other issue was bonds. All streets should have bonds. Some did, some didn't, some expired, therefore, we have streets that need top coating. This again fell upon the HOAs to take care of. This leaves over eight hundred owners who live within the city limits to be disenfranchised, no protection by the city, to live up to the sworn duties and support of the Development Code, City Code of Ordinance. That is about ten percent of our city residents who pay city taxes, who pay city taxes as all good citizens at Canton do, but without the benefit of city street system, along with no traffic control by the police department because they're private. Cars use cut-throughs on a number of the subdivisions so they can miss stoplights, disregard speeding because they don't have to worry about it. Two teenagers last year, last summer, were almost hit because of cut-through traffic, trying to get ahead and speed on through. These eight hundred families who have been disenfranchised ask only to be treated as other Canton citizens and to get what their tax money supports. Agreed of developers with the help of the governing body to turn a blind eye to city code just to gain impact, and building fees has resulted in unjustified disenfranchisement of those fit citizens. I'd ask... I'd ask council, when I bring it back two weeks for consideration, I pass it to everybody to get one of these packets. Bob, you can.
Yep. Good. Hope y'all read through it. Got any questions, please contact me. And I apologize to Mr. Bryant.
Well, I think we need, we need some apologies on both sides here, and we need to make sure that we may paint some order here. I think everybody's waiting now, at least. We should be able to carry on. Hopefully so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? I just have a question. If, if, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you asked Mr. Patton of the Road Department to give us a, a estimate, a cost estimate on the private street, because some of the figures that were quoted were one that was issued about a year ago.
Right, I did.
Yeah. And I think until we, until we know what the costs, the impact of the costs are to the city, then I don't think we can make any decisions on anything like this, despite Mr. Barry Ford's impassioned plea. And the other thing is, two words come to mind, is caveat emptor.
Right, I agree. Mr. Huffman indicated that he didn't think he had all the figures just yet, and hopefully you would have those in the next, before the next meeting, anyway. Mr. Grant and, and Mr. Patton and Mr. West met with Kickingwood Engineering Firm one day, the second half of last week, I don't remember, it was Thursday or Friday, and I think those estimates are forthcoming. Is that right, Ken?
My understanding, Kickingwood was going to submit a proposal for your approval to continue working, try to get some of that cost estimate information together.
Okay. Well, I think soon as, soon as we have that, but to distribute it out among the council, yes?
The, the key element in the packet that I passed out is the resolution. And in that resolution is, we are not going to rush out and top coat these streets. We're going to let them fall into the red or maintenance of city streets. These good folks have been living on those streets for a period of time. They asked to be brought in to the city's street system. They realized that it would be a major cost to the city, and at some future date, they will fall into the red recycle. But I think it's important to remember, the city had no problem bringing in this Cow Path and paying ninety-one thousand dollars last year. So there, there is, and by the way, was that in Spanish or Latin?
Latin.
Latin. Didn't take that in school. I'm sorry.
Question, I mean, the Winookiee, if I'm saying that right, was that just brought into the city as a city street last year, or how long had that been a city street?
It'd been, the city had been dedicated back in around two thousand and six or seven, and it's deteriorated in that period of time.
I'd just like to say, I have looked at this issue, and there's very different circumstances. Different streets are different ways. There are some developments that it was clearly delineated, designed to be private, the entire development applied from the start. Others were unclear. The city let y'all down in some cases, and, and other cases, it, it did. I wasn't here either, I was living here, but I certainly wasn't on the city council. But this needs to be looked at more individually, and not just blanket take in every single private street in the city at once. I mean, where do you, you stop? There's some old private streets that are dirt roads in the city. It's, it's, it has to be done in a little more detail than just blanket the whole thing. I'm very sympathetic to it. I, I would love to help everybody and, and, and take care of everybody's streets for you, but it's also got to be paid for. It's got to be paid for. It, it costs money now, it will cost money later. I, I, we're, we're on a downward trend here. We have, as I brought out in the past, folks, the biggest segment of our population pays no city property taxes. It's just a fact. It's the biggest, fastest growing segment, doesn't it? It's getting bigger and bigger. How are we going to pay for it? I'd love to do it, but if somebody brings me a plan that'll work, the plan, I would like to see it, not to take it, accept it all.
Okay, as I stated.
One more comment, and we need to move on. We'll, we'll discuss this even more at the next.
Okay, fine. I appreciate that, Mark. Talk about money. There was two million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars collected, impact fees, building fees, by the city, when those residents were put in, those homeowners. They had to pay that when they bought those homes. I mean, that's, to me, that's a sobering thought. And on top of that, they're citizens of this city, and we don't allow them to have city streets, although they pay city taxes, which has a percentage going to city streets. Talking about the concern downtown and having those businesses and all the concerns that we have, this to me is a petrocity that this city perpetrated on these fine citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. If there are other comments, if you would, we will, we will discuss these and our proposal that he has, at the, has made in our March fifteenth meeting. All right, we have, the only other item is that we will adjourn to executive session. If I have a motion, do so, discuss real estate acquisition and legal matters, and at the closing of the hour, I don't believe we should come out at any point. Very interesting.